The City and Marine City Special Commission Meeting is called to order on Thursday, May 5, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Claussen.
Here.
Commissioner Cradler.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor Verkaman.
Here.
City Manager Tettman.
Here.
Everybody's here. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Support.
We have a motion to support any discussion on the agenda. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to public comment. Anyone is welcome to address City Commission. Please state your name and limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Moran. I want to... Well, let's start with overcoming inertia, which I did on Tuesday in the rain to come up here and vote for the school millage, which unfortunately didn't pass. But I want to congratulate Shannon, our city clerk, and Michelle, our deputy clerk, for the fine job they did out of the box, first time around, to get that done. So, good on you. Sorry to see that the millage failed. I'm much sorrier to see the turnout. According to the Times Herald, it was fewer than 6,000 people throughout the county. Millage lost 55 to 45, if I remember correctly, again, according to the Times Herald. You know, and people have a right to say, "No, I don't want it," and that's okay. What upsets me more are the people that I know know the difference between having a sinking millage and not having a sinking millage, and didn't bother to come and vote. The price of freedom is not free. It's been paid for by the blood of patriots. But it's sustained by the shoe leather of people that get up off their behinds and come and vote. And if you don't do that, you get what you didn't vote for. The right to vote is being severely challenged in this country right now. It doesn't exist in a lot of places in the world, and people have to fight and put their lives on the line to vote in other places. Why do we think that that right is going to be there for us in the future if we're not willing to take the time and the effort to come out and vote? The sinking millage is an important part of our school's budget. It is basically an emergency fund. We have a tight enough budget as it is. Without that sinking fund, the school district is in danger of losing money out of the general fund that's allocated for other things. And I believe the people in this county know that. I believe if the people in this county get up and vote, we would have had that millage passed now and wouldn't have to incur the cost of putting it on a ballot again. I know doggone well that if it was for beer, guns, or marijuana, you'd have been here. So shame on you. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the City Commission's special meeting minutes of April 12, 2022?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion on that?
Yes, I have one. I know Shannon's new, and maybe she didn't understand when I qualify a vote. When I qualify a vote, that means I want that verbiage in the minutes on why I voted no on a topic. So on page three, when we eventually voted and I voted no, can you go back and pull out the recording of what I stated for that issue of why I voted no? I wanted that in the minutes at the time.
Okay. Is that related to the treasurer contract?
Pardon?
That's related to the treasurer contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep. I can amend those.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, can I have a motion to approve the City Commission Budget Workshop Minutes of April 12, 2022?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion?
Just one comment. And I know this was a big one for you, too, but the only thing I noticed is I asked a lot of questions, and I know you can't get it all in there, but it looked a little light for some of this. But it was a good effort because it was a big meeting.
My goal was to try to summarize the topics that were discussed versus trying to nail down every single question and every detail that was discussed.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission Meeting Minutes of April 21, 2022?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any discussion? Did I ask that already?
No.
No, you did not.
Any discussion? I even had cheat sheet notes. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. So we have the Historical Commission Meeting Minutes of January 18, 2022. We have the Pension Board Meeting Minutes of January 25, 2022. We have the Retiree Healthcare Plan Meeting Minutes of January 25, 2022. And we have a business license for Technocure, which is located right by VG's. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, letters A through D. Support.
We have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Cradler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And financial business, we're doing a due public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the City Commission will conduct a public hearing at 7:08 PM to receive public comments on the 2022-2023 fiscal year budget and the water sewer rate change. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Anyone want to discuss or have a comment on the budget? Okay. Then I'm declaring the public hearing is closed at 7:09 PM. Moving on to unfinished business, we have ordinance number 2022-001 to adopt the water sewer rate change. This is a second read. Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 2022-001?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number 2022-001, the water sewer rate change for second reading and adoption.
Support.
Any discussion?
Are you going to do a public hearing eventually on this?
We just did that.
That was just right here. It was combined, the two public hearing.
Did you do both public hearings at one time?
Yeah. She just announced that. Yeah.
I thought we only did the fiscal budget first. They should be done separately. No?
I don't see a need to. Both items are listed. It's an open public hearing. They were both advertised properly. I don't know that there is any reason to have two separate...
Was everybody aware that it was both the budget and the water?
I thought it was just the budget first. Were they called budget first?
That's... You have to be... If you're going to combine these because they're separate on the agenda, then you should have had them both on... You know what I'm saying? We want to make sure that everybody out here had an opportunity. If they didn't want to talk on the budget, maybe they wanted to talk on the water rate increase.
I said that, though. I said fiscal year budget and the water sewer rate change.
I said it.
You did. You noted it.
All right. Well, anyway, let's get into the ordinance. These ordinances need... I mean, I read what you had on here for the increase. One of the things is there's a... What used to be done for these is a three-year average. There's a spreadsheet. I know Mary Ellen used to do it. I'm assuming it was continued because you have to be very careful with making sure that we let everyone know how we came through with these figures. And even though you've got this sheet here, this really doesn't tell me how it was calculated. In fact, there's other issues that calculate it. So you've got the number of units used, meter sales in use, water use compared to revenue, employee raises, contract increases, capital outlay, information on utility... There's a whole list of things that get put into this. And my concern is that we do this... If anybody asks us really how we calculated this, I don't know if everything's been calculated in properly to make sure that everything's covered. You can't collect more than what's necessary to do. Now, last year, we didn't have an increase because there were several factors. We had gotten COVID money, some of the water use that we used to just let go got taken care of, so that wasn't an issue anymore. And then there was a third item. And we had surplus in the funds, which we normally don't have, so that's why we didn't have an increase last year. So my only concern is whether this is going to be enough and whether it was calculated properly and whether we used that three-year average in that spreadsheet that was always used for this process.
No, I don't know where the three-year spreadsheet is. There was not something updated that I had seen for it. So in discussions with Mike, exactly what's listed on this sheet, the simple costs of what we are incurring this year based on inflation, based on the cost of our contracts going up, the overall CPI that everybody's feeling, and the fact that there was not an increase last year, the 2.75 is the bare minimum of what we can do to continue to make ends meet. We will not be making any big profit, let me tell you. This is probably barely going to scratch the surface and get us to where we need to be. But I was made bluntly aware that if we went much higher than this, we would have people in here banging their fists, having a conniption fit, that we would do a massive increase this year and hadn't bothered to do one last year. So this number takes into effect, into account, that there may be people struggling, too. Maybe there are people who aren't working or anything like that right now either. So we were trying to take that as a factor and have this be a softer blow. So here is your reasons why we've increased it to 2.75.
And that's fine. I mean, I understand everybody's got their issues with trying to pay these bills, and this one's always been a terrible issue. The only thing is, is if we don't collect enough, then that's going to come out of the general fund. So that's my concern, is if this wasn't calculated properly or we're a little short, then we'll end up having to pay out of the general fund.
If, for some reason, costs continue to inflate and we continue to see massive increases, I'll come to you with a budget amendment, and we can fix it then. But I don't... I didn't want to sticker shock anybody either. We were trying to find a balance.
Yeah, the caustic chemicals. I mean, I can't even imagine.
And I will say, too, just...
Double?
Yeah.
Close.
It went up about $1.50, almost $2 a gallon just one week.
Yeah, that's...
But it is an enterprise fund, and we have to make sure that we do this properly, is all I'm saying. Because I read the state rules on this, and they're pretty specific about... It's almost like how DTE has to go about it. They have to post it in the paper. They have to explain why they're asking for a rate increase and blah, blah, blah. So it's similar type of thing. This fund is different than all the other funds we have.
I understand. And I've talked to Mike about it, and what I would like to do is a water study, a rate study, in the coming, probably next year. We haven't had one, I don't think, in a little while, and I think we're due for a new one, which will help with our projections going forward. We can work with Rural Water and our internal team and put together a water rate study. That can be something we can publish, too, so people can have even more data to understand why we're going to do what we're doing.
And if possible, maybe talk to Mary Ellen. She can explain that spreadsheet that she does so that in the future that you'll have that information, so that... She did always good calculation on all that. There was a whole lot of information that she plunked into that, and then, like I said, it gave you a three-year average. So maybe contact her about for future increases.
I can do that.
Thank you.
And we also do have a program, correct, for people that are struggling?
Yes. There's an amazing...
We mentioned it the last time.
Yes, a water assistance program that we had mentioned a few months back that Michelle had found through the Wayne County something or other. And I have to tell you, we have many residents that are participating in it, and it's been wonderfully, knock on wood, flawless. The money has come in. It's been very easy for residents to sign up. If somebody calls and they're having issues, Michelle's walking them right through it. I can't speak more highly about it, to be honest with you. It's been great.
Yeah. And this is also another reason why we have to, you know, keep promoting businesses to come into Marine City, too, because that also helps...
Keep your rates down.
Keep our rates down, right? If we, you know, keep saying no to everything here on the board and, you know, we don't want businesses to come in, our taxpayers are going to be affected by it.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent. Okay. Anybody else for discussion on this? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Cradler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Resolution 003-2022, Special Assessment for Delinquent Accounts. Can I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 003-2022?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Discussion?
Is the resolution part of the budget?
It's coming.
Yes.
It's a special meeting rate.
It's coming.
For the budget. I just wondered what all these resolutions are out here. Okay.
Anybody else?
I think what you're getting at is we used to always do these after we approved
Anyone else? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cradler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to new business, we have some exemptions to the Park Moratorium, the Waterworks Park Memorial Statue. Can I have a motion to approve an exemption on the Park Moratorium for the construction of the Veterans Memorial Statue in the Waterworks Park downtown on Water Street?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion?
No, I just want to say it's beautiful. Very, very beautiful.
Very nice.
It's going to be a very nice addition to the park. You guys do a wonderful job.
Yep.
I apologize for not mentioning it earlier, but just correction to the meeting agenda. You've statued... It should be statue on 11A1.
Oh, yeah. Statue.
Thank you.
But yes, very excited.
Your statue looks really good.
The statue of the moratorium had to be temporarily rescinded to make it work, so...
Any other discussion about the statue at Waterworks Park? Now you got me saying. All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner Cradler.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the Community and Economic Development Board to purchase a photo opportunity chair, which is one of those oversized large chairs like that's in front of Coghlan Jewelers in St. Clair, from their fundraising money in the amount of $1,000?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Discussion?
Question. Where is it going in the park?
It's going to go in Drake Park. It's the next motion.
Yeah, but where in the park?
On the northwest corner.
Oh, way up there in the top?
Yeah.
Is that right on cement?
There's pavers already there with nothing on it.
Okay, I see it. All right.
And it kind of... Actually, it's going to be nice because it's going to cover the electrical box that's sitting there. Anyway, for the first motion. Any other discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Cradler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now I need a motion to make an exemption in the Drake Park Moratorium for the placement of the photo opportunity chair in Drake Park in the northwest corner on the existing empty brick pavers.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion on that?
Is that going to interfere, I think, in that corner? Are they going to do that charger still there? The charging station?
There's no talk of that right now. No. It was really, really, really expensive to fix, so we yanked it now until we could figure out a different plan.
That's what the credit card one was.
Yeah. It's been broken and...
Yeah. Anybody else? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Cradler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to Resolution 004-2022, the special amendments for the fiscal year of 2021 and 2022 budget. Can I have a motion to adopt Resolution 004-2022 to amend the 2021-2022 fiscal year budget?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support and discussion?
Question. Are you... For this one here, are you talking to ones that are on the agenda, or were there other ones? I mean, because normally, we see what the amendments are.
The amendments are all under the... For the projected activity, all of the changes were made to that column from the last budget you saw to this one. All the amendments were made to it.
Normally, though, they're attached to this, is what I'm getting at, because I have no clue what's changing unless I have to go back and review.
You'd have to do a comparison from the last document to this one. And I mean, basically, Lisa, it was all of the stuff that you brought up and you raised. So I mean, honestly, if you look at your notes, those were the main amendments that we made.
But this says 2122 budget. This is current year.
This is current year. Yes. So we had to amend that. You had brought up some suggestions also, as we had gone through on that one, to take a look at. Yes, you did.
Well, I...
And we...
We only talked about the current, the new budget. You said we weren't talking about the old budget.
There was a few references to the other one that you asked Denise to look into.
But then I'd want to see those. I'm not... I can't approve...
You let her talk.
But it's in the projected. So it's a compare... You'd have to compare the other one to this one. Honestly, Lisa, there were so many. There was no way... I mean, it's almost every line item. And then the point is, is you true it up to where we are now. So some of them were minor changes that we had to go through and say, "Okay, we've gone over by, you know, instead of spending $5,000 here, we spent $5,500, so we needed to raise our budget up to true the number up closer to where we're at." So by looking at the projected activity, those are your numbers.
Okay.
And then you look at the original budget that was proposed, and that's what you see are your amendments.
Okay. That's not how we do the amendments. The amendments have to be listed with the sheet. If you go back on any of our old budgets and any of our old amendments...
Lisa, we talked about this. I'm not going to do things the way you used to just to do them. I am one person. I did not have the means to make such a spreadsheet...
You're not letting me finish now either.
...to do all of these.
Okay. Here's what I'm getting to. If you do it this way, and then they get into the audit, and it's not listed, you're going to have trouble in the audit.
I'm not, because Curtis can see the original budget numbers, the projected numbers, that's them. There's two columns. What you originally proposed, what we've proposed for year end. It's not a hard comparison.
It's not how you do it, though. You have to...
It is how you do it. Everybody can do it differently. And I didn't feel like doing double the work so that you could look at two columns on two pieces of paper. You can look at it here.
Okay, wait a minute. So somebody from the public comes up, and they see this budget amendment, and they're going to ask, "Well, what are they?"
Right here.
You're going to tell them to go in there and take two budgets and try to compare them.
One document, one line, original budget, which you guys approved, projected activity, which is your year-end numbers.
I'm telling you...
Change to the current numbers. It's not hard. It's one document.
You can do it the way you want, but I'm telling you, it's not going to work when it comes to the audit, so that's all right.
Well, that's all right. I'll have my own conversation with Curtis about that, but it's all right here.
Because we're approving something that we have no clue what changed.
You do. You're looking at it.
Wait, wait, wait.
And you went line item by line item at the work group for three hours and talked about them.
We said at that meeting we were not discussing the old budget.
It was referenced a few times.[1615.13] It was referenced a few times.
We were discussing the new budget.
However, it's the same concept.
Let me finish this time, would you? Let me, let me finish. I know you have a new way of doing things, and that's fine, but all I'm telling you is when you put together a resolution and it says, reviews the amendments, and there's nothing attached, when we got these, and even though we used to have a lot of them, trust me, we have to show those on here. And if you want to do it this way, I'm just telling you, we're going to get into trouble with a lot of these resolutions when it comes time for Curtis to do the audit because he has to take a change in the audit and, and, and he's got to look at a change in our budget and he's got to try to find where it is. This doesn't tell him anything. This just says, oh, well, we're making a bunch of changes, go look at the book. You can't expect the public in that to do it that way. It's just not the proper way to do it. I've been doing these budgets for a long, long time, and I've never, ever seen one of these come through without all the changes attached.
Well, I guess we'll find out, eh?
I guess.
I have never had a problem doing a budget in my experience of doing budgets, doing it like this. Two columns, they reference the current numbers and they reference the budget you originally proposed.
Very easy.
It's in one document. This resolution just references the document you're approving.
That document should be attached to this resolution then.
The resolution is the concept that you're adopting the budget, which is what you guys all have.
Attach it to the resolution.
It is easier for one person to look at one document.
Attach it to the resolution then.
It is, it's all in the packet. Everything's in the public.
That, it's, it's a totally separate thing.
It's the whole separate thing.
There's nothing attached to this, I don't see it.
It's in your packet.
It doesn't matter, so how's the public going to know that?
It's in the packet.
It's not in there to know that. This is the new budget. They're looking at the new budget. You're revising the old budget.
No, they're both in this document.
I understand how the columns go, but they're two separate documents. You have last year's budget and you have this year's budget. There are definite dates on the top that are different. So you have to specify, this is last year's budget, not the budget that's in here, which is this year.
They're both in here.
This, the 22, 23 is what we're doing this year.
And they're, it's clearly marked.
This affects 21, 22. So you have to pull last year's.
It's in here, 21, 22, projected activity for year end.
That's a column, that's a column, that's not the document.
It is. This is the budget document. All right, I'm...
It's the wrong one.
I'm done going in circles.
Yeah, we are going in circles, and like I said, we will let the professional, which is Curtis McBride, right? Look at this. And as far as, you know, we have nothing to hide from the public, we never have. This is all in the packet, it's all, I think it's pretty clear here, and we're moving on.
I mean, I, I can say for myself, I have all the information I need to vote on this. I'm not wanting for anything.
Right.
Yes, if any member of the public would like, it is adjusted in columns, listed as original, listed as amended, listed as projected.
What's at the top of the, what budget is it, though?
Right.
It doesn't say. It says calculations as of 43022.
No, no, at the very top of the page.
Says calculations as of 43022. It says budget report for the City of Marine City, Fund 101, General Fund, calculations as of 4302022.
Anyone else? All right, I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cradler.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkayman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
No.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Klassen.
No.
Motion carries.
All right, resolution... I lost my resolution. Where am I? Am I on C?
Your...
C.
Thank you. Resolution 005-2022, to adopt the 2022-2023 Fiscal Year Budget and Appropriations Act. So I need a motion to adopt Resolution 005-2022 to approve the 2022-2023 Fiscal Year Budget and Appropriations Act.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution Number 005-2022.
Support. We have a motion and support, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wait, wait, I was just waiting to see if anyone was going to... I got a lot of discussion, so hang on. All right, so one of the things when you do this budget is the employee wage and benefit schedule. I highlighted a whole lot of categories here. This, what this chart is created for, it shows every position, whether they're full-time, part-time, their current salary, proposed salary, estimated, what they get for contractual payments, their employee co-pays, FICA, pensions, phone stipends, life insurance, health insurance, dental insurance. I mean, there's a whole lot of information on this one chart. This chart is so important to our budget, and the reason is, if this is done properly and you add up all these columns for all these wages and benefits, you should be able to balance that in our budget because what happens in our budget is that you have some departments where the wages are split sometimes in 10 different accounts, so there's no way you can tell from our budget what anybody would make. You just can't. So this chart is critical in the budget. The problem is, it's, it, it needs a lot of updates. So a lot of the wages aren't correct, the, a lot of the salaries aren't, you know, the hourly rates, we've got overtime for the PD is incorrect, there was only 20,000 in the budget, we've got...
Did, are you looking at the one I sent out just this week that corrected?
The one you just sent?
All of the wages are correct. I went through BSN personally and verified all of the numbers.
Well, then, a lot of people got some hefty raises.
Well, in the second column, the proposed, the built-in 2%, which is built into the budget.
I understand it. Let, let me finish with it. The problem is, is even on this with your wages, even your wage, you've got 75, you've got in the budget 77. You don't have 77 listed. You've got your contractual payments where you're getting $5,000 for not taking healthcare, but you also have 5,000 in the healthcare column, which is incorrect. You either have one or the other. We have a lot of those. We have several people in the DPW that get it, and it's in both places. We have people in the PD, it's in both places. We have people in the PD, like our chief and another, I, I know Mr. Vandermehl's been here forever, there's no matching pension funds for those guys. We've got a couple of new officers coming in, they're gonna, they're gonna get, be in the pension. We should put in information for their healthcare because you at least budget it, and then if they don't use it, then we go back to the stipend. But at least it's in there. So all this, we have the clerk, it says she's only making 62, that's not what she started at. So I'm confused at all these wages in here, whether they're correct or not. I did look at the sheet that was attached, the, the FICA calculations I'm a little concerned about, too. But anyway, there's, there's a lot of these things like for the matching retiree healthcare, Jim Vandermehl, and he doesn't get that, and it's in here. So you see what I'm saying, there's a lot of things. So if this could be, this is like the number one document that needs to be spot on, and that way you can add up all these columns and then, which I was doing in the budget, trying to match what's in the budget versus what's in these columns, and it's just not coming out. So I have some serious concerns on that first. So I would hope that we could get this cleaned up a lot better, and, and there was some issues with it. I found a couple of things from last year, but this document is just imperative for us in the public to figure out this budget. So that's the first thing. I guess I'll just go down my list here. So... I'm very concerned about this budget. We, we have all, we have all new people handling this budget that do not have the experience needed to understand the complexities of this budget. I'm not faulting anyone, but more time should have been put into this than normal to understand it by all of us. Not just them, all of us. I'm afraid we will be short at the end of the budget year. We are giving out raises but not fixing roads. We also still have a very healthy fund balance, luckily, and there's money in the road funds for projects. The first thing is the wage and benefit chart, which I just talked on. The GLs are so important, those are the little numbers on each of these accounts, how you can pull it out for it. The revenue page needs to list the COVID payment. I know you told me we're going to get another second payment in. You told me you weren't going to list it because you didn't have a project. You don't need a project, it's still revenue, it still needs to be documented in the revenue page. Also, the city voted to sell the guy center, so you need to come up with some type of estimate, what you think you're going to get for him, and that also needs to be included as revenue in that page. In the city management, the clerk section, the stipends for not receiving healthcare or 5K should not be listed under healthcare benefits, but should be listed in the cash in lieu of benefits, GL 712. Also, there's no OPEB figures, those are for the retiree healthcare stuff. In the treasurers department, we are not allowing anything for meals and very little for training when this person will be tending a lot of training, I figure. The assessing department still doesn't have any increase per contract, that's not listed. Human resources, we need to pull the actuarial information that was sent in December, or you could use what's in the audit. The audit's saying that the pension amount should be 322,237, and the healthcare portion, they recommend, is 283,718. That's very important. Rubbish collection, we're still not using the cost of revenue that this department's collected plus we have the new contract. There's a lot of miscellaneous issues within the departments brought up during the workshop still need to be addressed. The water plant, I did not get the list from the DPW on the expenses for the 100,000. These notes should be in the budget so we don't forget what they're being used for, so if I could still get that list, I'd appreciate it. The special assessment fund is still incorrect, and you still will not have money to pay the account there. The water and sewer increases, I covered that in the prior message. I will not vote for this budget since the process was not followed. After the workshop, the first workshop we had, if this commission wanted to move forward with this, what was presented, then we were supposed to make a motion to move forward with the budget. We made no such motion, so this budget is just out there. There were a lot of issues with the original budget, we did not have a second workshop to review it, and we didn't get the next copy until April 25th. I'd like to know what day it was posted in the paper to make sure people had time. This current budget still has a lot of issues. If this passes tonight, as far as I'm concerned, we're violating the process. This will be caught in the audit. At the planning meeting, you once said, if the budget's approved, you'll be able to move forward with spending and not have to come to the commission for any approval. Is that a true statement?
I'll answer everything at once when you're done.
All right. I guess that I am done. I need to know what the answer to that question is.
Okay, so I'm going to start, first off, some of the things that you said are not accurate. Yes, there are some things that I can probably say in this wage table that are not right on the healthcare FICA end. Denise did the best that she could with that end of it for me, that is not my expertise. The wages in here are correct. As for the ARPA money, I stated in the work group, I will not put revenue in a budget that is not guaranteed. I will not inflate the budget so that you look like you are getting revenue that potentially may not.
Right.
That is why I will not put in there the potential sale of 303, because when I created this budget, you guys had not voted on the sale of it. Your budget for last year is half a million dollars in the hole. One of the reasons is because there was an assumption made of a sale of a piece of property for $300,000, that didn't happen. But you still continued to do expenses associated with the revenues that you had, hence why you dipped into your fund balances so deeply this past fiscal year. I specifically spoke to Curtis. I am not allowed to put in this budget ARPA money that has not been given a project title. That is not my decision, that is your professional auditor. Ask him if you don't believe me, but that came from his mouth. So once this group creates and, and chooses the path for it, dictates the project, we can put it in here because then it actually goes in the proper line item. It just, doesn't go in some random line item in your revenue. Has to be projected, specific. I can't remember all the other things that you said in there, but there is, this is a balanced budget. We worked our tails off for months on this. Everybody has had these documents for weeks upon weeks. I have asked until I was blue in the face if anybody wanted to, suggestions, cares, concerns, anything, come to me. Want to know how many phone calls I received? Zero. The only thing that I got was a three-hour ambush at a, at a work group, and I answered every single thing that you brought, Lisa.
No, you didn't.
I was, in this document, there is a response to it. The number was either tweaked or left based on an answer I received from our auditor or our accountants. So I did respond to every little red mark next to every line item from that work group. Whether or not you want to believe it or not, Denise and I spent hours and hours going through that. Yes, we did do that for you and your request. We worked our tails off to give you a balanced budget because last year you didn't have a balanced budget. You had a budget that intentionally dipped into your fund balance significantly. I wanted a year where we could actually start to recoup some of our fund balance so that we can wisely plan for the future year to do projects without dipping into our fund balance and creating a bigger, I don't want to create a deficit. So we need a year to allow growth to happen again, and we can properly project into the future. I feel like the baptism by fire for the last nine months has not given me the opportunity to properly project and plan for future projects. None of us had. Mike's been running around with his head cut off dealing with everything, so have I. We have not had proper time to plan. So I did not feel comfortable building things into this that I couldn't justify expense-wise. So yes, this is a very vanilla budget. It is get the basics, keep the maintenance, keep everything safe, services provided, and everything at a cost that is not going to hurt the residents or the business owners of this town. It is a fair budget to get everybody through the next year, to figure out where we need to go from there. I have, I, I have, there's nothing wrong with this budget. It has been through UHY. I am not a rookie when it comes to doing budgets. This is a balanced, solid, safe budget for this community, and I will defend it all day long.
There's no way for poor UHY coming in here like they did to know the ins and outs of our budget in that short of a time. I'm not faulting anybody that had to try to do this budget because we just don't have the experience in there right now that, and there's, like I said, UHY came in here, but they have no way to know how complex our budget is, and they can't do it within a month or so and put something together.
So you asked about experience? The previous treasurer was in the spot for, what, two years? A year and a half?
A year and a half.
Yeah. And between all the accounts, I'm just saying this, this is a fact, $584,955 in the hole. Our general budget was $282,229 in the hole. And so if we can take those numbers and this, this assumption of a sale, because I checked with other cities, and my accountant, too, you never assume a sale, you cannot put that number in a budget. You cannot because if the sale doesn't, I mean, you can't.
Right.
You have to have real numbers.
Right. There's nothing wrong with that extra money coming in.
So why didn't the auditor have her take it out?
Ask them.
And, and most of the overages we had, the budget, the original budget we passed was balanced. We had to put in a balanced budget. Those overages came through the year for repairs and, and major issues that popped up during the year.
Can you, can you ask?
They did. We had a balanced budget. Mike, we can't turn in a budget that's not balanced to the state of Michigan.
Can we talk about the inflated attorney fees, please?
I just want to point out briefly
Okay.
That if you look under the original budget for 2021, 2022, which is what this commission passed, and you look on the last page for the net revenues and appropriations of all the funds, you passed a negative $478,734 budget last year.
That's a different sheet. We did not pass a negative balanced budget. Cannot pass one.
This is important for BSN. It's not a negative in the general fund, but between all of the accounts, it is.
It wasn't, go back to the, to the...
It's here, it's on here.
You're pulling out something out of the, the system that's newer. What I'm saying is go back to the budget that we passed last April. Okay, no, the one last April, pull it out of the old packet, and you'll see it was a balanced budget. We cannot turn in a non-balanced budget to the state, it's illegal.
I know.
So we did not turn in a negative balanced budget to the state, I can tell you that right now. Or, so it was done that way. You have to look at the right sheets.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
We do, throughout the year, there were a lot of things that, that we had to fix. There was a lot of stuff coming through to us all year long.
Right.
That were in addition to
No.
The former budget. Yes, they were.
There was a few things that popped up throughout the year, but nothing to the, the significance of the way things were misappropriated. They were added in under those little footnotes that you guys liked, but those numbers didn't equate to the actual expenditures.
I'll pull out my...
So, when you, when you give somebody $10,000 in a line item, but underneath it you list $80,000 worth of work, and you've approved that work, and they spend $80,000, you're $70,000 in the hole right now.
And that happened.
And that happened in multiple accounts.
I'll pull you, I'll pull you the budget for...
It happened.
It happened.
I'll pull you last year's.
Lisa, you can say what you want, but I'm not folding on this. I'm the one who's been living, breathing, eating, and sweating the numbers for months.
You're not listening either, Holly. Pull out the old budget.
So, I'm gonna finish answering the questions. So, the other question that you had was, do I have, um, do I want to address the issue of minor boards being able to spend what you guys approved tonight in their budget?
No, no, that's not what I asked.
The answer is yes.
I asked you, did you say at the planning commission that once the budget's approved, you'll be able to move forward with spending and not have to come to the commission for any approvals?
I said that I was going to, yes. That was what I was coming for you. It's in here for a motion tonight.
You can't do that.
Yes, you can. You can do it on a minor board if it is appropriated funds by the state.
You better talk to the lawyer on that one.
God, I have.
Well, I want to see something in writing then from the attorney.
If you appropriate city funds into a budget, and the line items are here, planning commission, $10,000. There is a budget limit of $2,000 before something has to come through you guys. If you approve the planning commission to spend $10,000...
They cannot just spend it.
And planning commission goes and decides to hire a wage trim for a $1,200 item, they can do it. They can vote for it and do it. You've already given them the money. You're just being redundant.
I'm asking you the entire budget, not just the planning commission. You just made the statement at the planning commission, okay?
I'm misunderstanding what you're saying then. I don't...
I'm asking you on this entire budget, when it's approved, which I'm sure they're gonna, I'm not, whether you're gonna sit there and you're just gonna spend the money or you're gonna bring the issues back to the commission.
If they're under $2,000, we can do it. If it's over $2,000, everything has to come through you.
That's all you had to answer.
Yep.
Well, that's never changed, and I've never attempted to do anything of...
That's why I'm asking you the question.
Yeah.
All right. Can, can we go back to my question, please?
Which one was that?
I'd like my question answered about the inflated attorney fees.
There's massively inflated attorney fees. Um, Bob Davis was involved in multiple issues throughout the last year, um, some of which resulted in the hiring of a second attorney based on the former treasurer's issues. So, yes, our attorney fees were incredibly high, as were our audit fees. Um, the audit fees were incredibly high last year too because they had to spend so much time working on it because things were not available, documents were not able to be found, things were screwed up. So, there was some of those extra expenditures on top of some of the already existing issues in the budget.
Yeah, and I would, I would think that, you know, we keep talking about the public, the public being aware. The public needs, should be aware of that kind of stuff. It's coming out of their, their money. I mean, it's their money. It's their money that we spent on all that nonsense. Okay, that's all I really had. Anybody else for discussion?
A couple of quick things. One quick, one not so quick. First, thank you for being conservative on the revenues. If you're wrong, you're gonna be wrong in a good way.
Right.
And there's nothing wrong with being conservative on your revenue stream. If you're not conservative on it, you can get yourself in a lot of trouble real fast. So, first, thank you for that. Second is, I know it was mentioned tonight already as well as in the past meeting about it's such a shame we're not doing any road work. If you remember back to 2018, when we first did the infrastructure committee, now, I know, Joe, you were on it. At the end of, after we were done, we came to the board with a report that said, you're gonna have some easy pickings. We can get a bunch of stuff done, but once that's done, you're going to be waiting years between doing a single project because the amount of income coming in from the state road monies isn't enough to handle some of the, doing one of these projects every year. It's just not there. So, you know, laying blame for the fact that we're not doing a big road project this year with the state monies is kind of disingenuous because everyone was warned about it, and there's no way to do it without either trashing your general fund or waiting till you build up the fund surplus in order to do it correctly. Now, obviously, we have this other COVID money that's kind of lurking in the wings that we could possibly use for it, but as that hasn't been, you know, we haven't determined that right now. It's, again, disingenuous to put it in the budget and to plan for using it when we haven't said that's what we want to use it for. But I, I do take exception to anyone saying that we're not doing a road project. Shame on us. We're saving the money so we can do roads in a fiscally responsible way. So, that's all I have. Anyone else?
I'd like to answer that. I just pulled out the preliminary balance sheets from 331, end of March this year. We have $884,000 in the major street fund, and we have $504,000 in the local street fund. Now, you still can move some fund from the major to local. You're allowed to do certain, and we have the COVID money. So, if we're projected to get, we've already got one COVID payment. We're gonna project to get a second COVID payment. That's roughly $425,000. So, technically, you'll have close to $900,000 in your local street fund.
But you also have to be careful because some of that money, in fact, a lot of it goes to pay wages, goes to pay for equipment upkeep. It's not all just designated for repaving streets.
True.
Then the other piece you have to also think about is, we've also picked off a lot of the streets that don't have underlying piping issues. There's no point spending a bunch of money to repave a street if you're gonna go back and rip it up a few years later to fix the piping. So...
Infrastructure.
The, yeah, underground infrastructure.
That's what the COVID money is allowed to be used for, is that part.
And I agree, and obviously, we as a board need to figure that out at a later date. But for now, because we don't, haven't allocated that money towards that, I believe, as Holly had previously stated, it should not be in the budget. You know, once we figure out what we want to do with that COVID money, then it's, we can do a budget amendment at that time.
Yeah, you gotta have the money first. True.
This prior commission, and I was on it, and I'm also on the, on the committee, and the board voted and made a motion to do two streets a year. It's a, it was a commission order. It wasn't, uh, well, should we do this, should we do that? We sat down at every meeting and tried to figure out what roads we can do. If we got money coming in, I believe we should work on the roads.
I'd like to put it into perspective for a second. Commissioner Clausen, that motion was made with the caveat that there was money to do the roads. You would do two roads a year if there was money to do the roads. And I want to put it into perspective for a second. Mike put together multiple quotes for me of the road projects so that if something came in that I could go after, we'd have them teed up with an estimate of how much they cost. Mike, can you give me an idea of what the average cost of the, of the roads were that came in, the price?
$825,000.
There. That's why we're not doing all the roads right now. You want to talk about exactly what Jacob just said.
Is that one road?
Sleeping one road.
What road?
It could be like your Westminster, your North Elizabeth. South Main's gonna be almost $400,000 just alone.
But when you say one road, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify for people listening. But, like, how many blocks?
One block.
One block.
Nine hundred feet.
Nine hundred feet. So, when you say road, I don't want to give anybody the impression that it's from tip to tail. It is a city block.
One roof, same roof floor. Water sores curve over, that's gonna be over $900,000.
Right.
You know, that's when we check down, like, that is $850,000.
Yep.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
And keep in mind that everyone knows what's going on with the gas prices and oil prices right now. One of the key ingredients in repaving is tar, which comes from oil. Oil prices go up, your road construction costs go up significantly.
But we have other communities that are getting big grants to do their roads, and we're sitting here still.
I was going to all the SCOTTS meetings.
Exactly. I'm at the table for those now, where we haven't had somebody at the table for years doing that. So, I agree. I think Marine City has missed the boat for a while on that. We're gonna fix it. Um, but I just want to put that into perspective because, um, Cheryl, you did mention it's infrastructure underneath it. We don't want to tear up roads. So, and the COVID money that we're getting is $474,000. $474,000 won't even do one road. So, I just want that to be put into perspective so people understand. We're not sitting on millions of dollars and saying we're not doing your roads. That is not true.
But you can add that to the $500 and a half million you got sitting there, plus you got another $884,000 in major, and like I said, you're allowed to move funds.
And we can, but we also, you do need tread lightly where there's crack ceiling projects. What if we blow a, a pipe underneath it, and Mike has to tear up a road and repave it? You can't wipe yourself out to nothing.
That could happen at any time, though.
So, you have to have a cushion.
But that's what the ready-to-serv fees are for.
With our commission, during our committee meetings, we always said we're gonna keep a safe balance in the major water funds, which is $300,000.
Yeah, you have to. You have to, yeah. And, you know, one of the things that I, and I will say, kudos to Holly and the group in the, in the office. They really do go after grants. I mean, you guys, if there is something out there to help save money for our citizens, it is, you know, it is the grant money that we are always looking for stuff. Michelle gets stuff on her computer all the time, and, and we've gotten a lot of them, you know? So, yeah, so we definitely do look at that consistently, more so than we ever have in the past.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah. Any other discussions about the Resolution 004-2022? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor McCammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
No.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
No.
Commissioner Cradler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, moving on to Resolution 005-2022 to adopt the 2022-2023 fiscal year...
Next one.
We just did that.
Yeah, we just did that one.
I just letter D.
I don't want to do it again.
I had my notes in the wrong spot. Okay. Resolution 002-2022, adopt fund transfer. This is for hydrant usage. Can I have a motion to adopt Resolution 006-2022 to approve the fund transfer from the general fund to the water and sewer fund for hydrant usage in the amount of $10,000?
Make a motion. We approve Resolution Number 006-2022.
Support.
We have a motion to support. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cradler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor McCammon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, E, Resolution 007-2022, adopt fund transfer for the cemetery. Can I have a motion to adopt Resolution 007-2022 to approve the fund transfer from the general fund to the cemetery fund in the amount of $25,000?
Still moved.
Support.
We have a motion to support. Any discussion on this? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cradler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor McCammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, Resolution 008-2022, fund transfer from the general fund to the water and sewer fund. I need a motion to adopt Resolution 008-2022 to approve the fund transfer from the general fund to the water and sewer fund in the amount of $4,000.
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution Number 008-2022.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yes, it's listed as Resolution 008-2021.
Oh, and the actual, improperly typed on.
Is it on it? I'll amend it. So, amended.
Anybody else? Uh, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cradler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
As amended, yes.
Mayor McCammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Resolution 009-2022, um, to adopt the fund transfer from the general fund to the water sewer fund. I need a motion to adopt Resolution 009-2022 to approve the fund transfer from the water and sewer fund to the special assessment fund in the amount of $600.
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution Number 009-2022.
Support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cradler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor McCammon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Going on to H, Board and Commission Spending Procedure. Can I have a motion to clarify the spending procedure for the planning commission permitting them to spend funds not in excess of $2,000 which have been approved in their budget line item?
Why didn't we get this ahead of time?
You did, in your packet, last week.
It's right here.
It's not in this packet.
It's just, it's a motion for discussion of it.
I didn't get anything.
Yeah, it's just...
Line out of H.
There's nothing, there's nothing to hand out with it. That's just what...
Well, it'd be nice to know what it's for. I mean, it says Board and Commission Spending Procedure. I'm assuming you're gonna give some type of procedure written out that says how we're gonna handle things in the future.
And that's it, just to clarify what we were talking about earlier.
So, this is just for one board?
Well, it's for any minor board. It should be minor board, not just planning. Any minor board that is appropriated city funds.
We have a second motion for CED.
Yeah.
So, it, you, you're, you want to clarify, and let me make sure I get this right, that any minor board should be able to spend up to $2,000 on an item, service, et cetera, provided it's been budgeted for without city commission approval?
Yes, going back.
On the item?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and this was discussed in the work group, and I was asked by Commissioner Bryson to bring it to the board for an official decision on it rather than it just being kind of a conceptual thing as we put it in a motion. Because, again, it's redundant. You've already approved them to have the money. They want to go and spend the money on the tasks that they've been given as a board, but they're pigeonholed, having to come back and ask a second time for the money that they've already been appropriated. It just doesn't make any sense.
And this is common practice.
This is common practice.
Right.
Here's the issue, though. You have several boards that have no power whatsoever, that cannot just spend money. They have, including the CED.
That is gonna be a separate discussion.
Let's take a, well...
Because we, I know, they can't. They have in their ordinance...
There's several boards like that.
Yeah, but those boards weren't given any money. There's no money appropriated. Really, that's why...
But you're making a motion to give them all that in the event they ever get money.
Well, yeah, if the, if the other board did it, then we don't have to come back to it. But currently, the only one in here that has the money in a budgeted line item is planning that is city funds.
Right.
The CED board has a, a line item in here for money that has been fundraised outside of here that is not taxpayer dollars.
Right.
That's gonna be a separate discussion. This is specific to boards that are granted city funds, and it's budgeted.
And basically, that's planning, right?
As of right now, yes, it's the only one.
As of right now, it's planning.
Yeah.
Well, when I, when I was on the planning, and I came up with the planning, I called the attorney, and the attorney said, "No, it has to come to us." That was straight from Bob, and if he told me wrong, I'm telling you, that's what he told me.
That's only for CED.
And you can call him. Everything has to come to the board for approval. Can't spend any city money without the board approving it.
You've already approved it.
Yeah.
Just, well, here's...
We approved a budget.
You approved a budget. That doesn't mean that, and you have to understand, when you approve this budget, it's just a piece of paper. That doesn't mean you can go out and spend all the money, whatever you want, just because it's in that budget. You still have to come back to the board to get the approval for the items.
So, what, let me ask this one. Why do you have minor boards? If you're not gonna give them the power to do anything, why do you have them? You have a planning commission that is designated to do only a few items. They handle your zoning.
Because they have to come back to us for it.
They, no, they don't.
We are the governing board.
You've trusted them with what they do.
That's not how it works.
You've appointed their people. You've given them a budget to spend on the items that are relative to what that board does.
We give everybody a budget. We give, every department had a budget, but they still gotta come back to us and ask for that.
Only if it's over $2,000. If Mike has to go spend something that's 500 bucks on something, he comes to me and says, "Holly, I need to go get this." I say, "Go buy it."
I think you should go, I think if Bill talked to the attorney, I think the prudent thing to do is to table this until you can get a ruling from the attorney. So, I'd make a motion to table.
Did, I just have a question. Was there a discussion? I mean, because Bob was here at the last meeting, correct?
He wasn't at the work group for that.
Okay.
If you want to table this, I will get an opinion from Bob, but there's nothing wrong with us doing this with appropriated funds.
Okay, so, are we going to just table, well, we might as well just table both then because the second one is the CEBD board, but it's actually different, though.
It is a different concept.
Because we raised those funds.
You should still discuss it.
All right, so, okay.
Well, it doesn't say that there's two things here.
Nobody's seconding your motion yet, so...
Support.
We have a motion to support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson?
No.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Cradler?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor McCammon?
No.
Motion carried and settled.
All right, can I have a motion to clarify the spending procedure for the Community and Economic Development Board permitting them to spend funds not in excess of $2,000 which they have fundraised? permitting them to spend funds not in excess of $2,000, which they have fundraised?
Well, I guess I'm gonna raise the same type of concern with this one, too. I mean, unless we know what the deal is. If they raise the money and they have their own money, why are we holding on to it, then? The CED board has the least amount of power. And in fact, recently, I noticed that the CED board appointed a member and didn't bring it here. We appoint the members for those boards.
Not that one.
All the members.
Not that one. It specifically says in the ordinance, which we referred back to and have a copy of it here, that the Chamber of Commerce appoints their member to that board.
They appoint their member, but when we have to approve that member-
It does not say that. If you read the ordinance-
You're taking this out of context, Holly.
Read it.
I understand that it's saying that they give their person, but eventually, this board has to make the appointment legal. You understand?
We do the other, I understand. I understand what I brought in.
Well, you don't understand because you're letting them do what they want.
So, the motion was to clarify the spending procedure for the Community and Economic Development Board.
Yes.
Which they've raised the funds for $2,000, so we don't have this. Because really, what it does is it just kind of chokeholds us, right?
Well, it does, and I think your CED board is really a cool board. They're tasked with going out there and figuring out how to market Marine City, drive business and economic development to town, bring foot traffic in for businesses and events, but you give them no money to spend to do it. They're like the brains of the operation, but they have no power or authority to do anything. So, I think what I'd like to ask is that we look at either fixing the ordinance to give them some power to do it. Because, why, what are they, what are they doing? They're coming up with these brilliant ideas and then they're coming back here to ask for $100 here or there. I mean, it's kind of crazy.
The point is, commissioners, that is money that that board raised.
Right.
It's not citizens' money.
Right.
It's not under the purview of this commission. We should not have to ask you permission to spend money that we went out and-
Well, then, why do you keep it in the city's account?
Where else are we gonna put it? In my checking account?
I don't know, create, create something.
Well, fine, we'll take the money out of the General Fund and we'll put it in a checking account that's separate.
I think you need to-
And then you won't have any of this.
I think you need to talk to the, again, to the attorney of the legalities that, because the board, I was there when that board was created and that board was created to have no power whatsoever because there were issues there.
This has nothing to do with power.
Well, it is giving them power. You're giving them spending power.
It's money that we raised.
But it's our money.
I understand that, but it's in a city budget.
We don't have to ask you permission to spend money. It could be ours.
I think the easiest thing to do is just to give the money that we raised to the chamber. Didn't we discuss this?
Yep.
And just take it out of, take it out of Marine City. Because, I mean, if we honestly, if we can't, as a fundraising entity, spend our own money without getting permission from this board, then it's just sitting in, it's just sitting in the bank. That's all it's doing.
It's gonna be stock, yeah.
You know, and the city's collecting interest on our money. But if the city doesn't want that interest, then we will gladly take it out.
So, make that motion. I'd approve that.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the ability of the Community and Economic Development Board to spend non-taxpayer funds up to $2,000 without coming to city commission for approval.
I object to you putting a limit on it.
I was just gonna say that.
Yeah, it's your own money.
Why should you put a limit on it?
It's not, it's not our money, right?
Why don't you just move it out?
That, you know, I will amend my motion to remove the limit.